Our city clerk comments. I see none. We will now take up discussion item 201. Clerk, please introduce item 202, I'm sorry. 201.
Item 201, Housing SD Proposed Parking Requirement Regulatory Reform for Multifamily Residential Development in Transit Priority Areas. We do have quite a large number of public speakers on this. The time will be limited to one minute per speaker, so please start consolidating and thinking about your comments now.
Thank you. I understand that the mayor, Mayor Faulkner, is here to make some comments and introduce item 201. Welcome, Mayor Faulkner.
I am indeed. Thank you, Council President Gomez and the rest of the council members. Thank you for the opportunity to help introduce today's item. As all of us know, we are in the middle of a statewide housing crisis. And every single member of this council, to your credit, has publicly stated that addressing this crisis at the local level is a top priority. And over the past years collectively, we have taken some very important steps to speed up the permitting process, to incentivize the construction of affordable housing, and to make it easier to build more micro units and granny flats. And we've added capacity for nearly 40,000 new homes and communities throughout the city, giving property owners the right to build without going through an onerous approval process. And these changes have helped fuel a near-tripling of housing permits that are issued annually. And the bottom line is that we have significantly streamlined San Diego's development system. Now it's time to radically overhaul the system itself. We need to get government out of the way so constructing homes becomes easier, less expensive, and faster. And we need smart growth centers with this new construction near transit so we can meet the goals of our landmark climate action plan. And we need to create more opportunities for people to get out of their vehicles, the number-one driver, which we know, of greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the ways we accomplish these goals is by getting rid of outdated parking mandates that add significantly to the cost of housing. Each parking space adds 35,000 to 90,000 to the overall cost of building a housing unit, with underground parking being the most expensive. Those costs are then passed on to renters and buyers, making units less affordable for San Diego's working families, which of course are the lifeblood of our economy. And so what we are proposing today is separating the cost of parking from the cost to rent or buy a unit. So San Diegans can choose for themselves to pay for a parking spot, or go without parking if that works better for their lifestyle or their financial situation. And these parking reforms set the city on the right path for the future of mobility technologies that are emerging, and for younger generations who increasingly want new cost-saving options. So we're also going to require that multifamily residential developments provide transportation amenities to incentivize transit use, biking, walking, and ride-sharing. Amenities like bicycle storage or repair stations, onsite bike, car, or electric vehicle share, transit pass subsidies, or onsite daycare facilities. I'm committed to working with this council to ensure that the amenities are provided as part of this program are targeting active transportation and transit in our neighborhoods, and work with the council to explore additional ways that we can fund these improvements. And it's also important to keep in mind that the proposed parking reforms are for future residential development projects near transit. So this will be a long-term change for San Diego, but the change will be gradual as new housing is built in the coming years. But before I conclude, I want to make one final point, which is the parking reforms that are before you today are driven by data. A peer-reviewed, a peer-reviewed city that was validated through testing and data collection recommended that the city adopt components of the parking reductions implemented, some of those that have been happening in Seattle and Portland. And after Seattle implemented zero minimum parking requirements within transit areas, they experienced lower vehicle ownership rates and higher rates than higher rates of households without vehicles. All the cities in the peer review have average vehicle-per-household rates that are about 7% to 23% lower than the rate here in San Diego. And an important factor in contributing to that lower average is that each of those cities have implemented a parking reduction program like the one before you today. All of us know that we need more housing in San Diego. We built more than 4,000 affordable housing units in our city over the last five years, and it's barely made a dent. We still need 35,000 more units to house San Diegans, and we're never going to get there by nibbling around the edges. We need this change. And that's why I've proposed a number of citywide housing reforms focused on building more housing near employment centers and near transit, a goal shared by every member of the city council. From removing height restriction outside the coastal zone to allowing unlimited density for developments that include more affordable and homeless housing, these changes represent a complete rethinking about how we deal with housing. And as I said, that the state of the city, we must change from a city that shouts "Not in my backyard" to one that proclaims "Yes, in my backyard." From a city of NIMBYs to a city of YIMBYs. Today, we mark the first step on that journey with this parking reform. Again, I want to thank every member of the city council for your continued persistence on the need for change with one goal: How do we provide more housing for San Diego's working families? Today will be a big step in that direction. And I'm council president. Again, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Please introduce item, staff, I'm sorry, staff is ready to introduce item. As you're making your way over, please introduce yourself and let us know how much time you will need for your presentation. Fifteen minutes? Okay. If you don't mind introducing yourself for the record.
All right. Good afternoon, council president, members of the council. My name's Alyssa Muto, deputy director in the planning department. Before you today, we have the Affordable Housing Regulations for Transit Priority Areas for Multifamily Residential. Next slide, please. So the project goals that we had moving into this endeavor and this regulatory proposal are to increase housing affordability and the production of housing, to implement our climate action plan and the City of Villages strategy, and to reduce the reliance on cars and therefore reduce auto trips and traffic congestion for all residents. Next slide. So here's the transit priority map for the city of San Diego, based on the state legislation defining within a half-mile of a transit stop, and that is light rail, bus rapid transit, or where two bus routes come together with high-frequency headways, so 15 minutes. And those areas are shown in the orange and blue on the screen. Next slide. However, for this proposal, what we have done is we have only implemented these regulations for those transit priority areas that are functioning that way now, or that are included in Sandag's RTIP, the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, for funding within the next five years. So we have included this definition in our parking regulations. Next slide. So a couple of points we wanted to outline and highlight before we jump into what the study revealed and our proposed regulations. The new mobility technologies really will decrease car ownership in the future, and that's automated vehicles, connected vehicles, shared vehicles, as well as increased and improved transit and walking and bicycle improvements, active transportation improvements around the city. Trends also show an increasing number of young professionals are really looking for that lifestyle with reduced cars, even down to zero, or just one car for a family and household. And parking is not free. As Mayor Kevin Faulkner just said, parking can range between 35,000 to 90,000 per parking space from a surface lot into a underground parking structure. And the McKinsey report really highlighted that the key to affecting housing affordability is through citywide policies that can target car reliance, such as parking reform. Some of the recent adopters in the state of California include San Francisco, Santa Monica, and Sacramento. In our study, we did a process of a peer-city evaluation and benchmarking of other cities that have implemented zero parking minimums. We identified those key transportation factors through a statistical analysis of the influence of, what are the factors that influence car ownership and reliance? We went out and we tested those on actual sites within the city of San Diego, developed the policy and draft code, and we're here before you today to consider the proposal. So for our peer-city methodology, we did look at the 30 largest cities nationwide, and then we drew a line down the Mississippi and looked to the west of that. And that's because all of those cities were built after the car. And so we know that there's an inherent constraint in our cities with the development and accommodation of cars historically, and so how do we repurpose that space? We also looked at cities that had a lower average per household vehicle ownership, and then those cities that had regulations in place. And with that, we came up with two peer cities that I'll talk a little bit more about today, and that's Seattle and Portland. Next slide. So Seattle has an interesting story that actually goes back to 1980. 1980, Seattle adopted zero parking minimums for non-residential uses in the downtown area. In 2004, they expanded that out to the areas around their light rail centers. And then furthermore, in 2010, kind of in those concentric circles, extending out to urban villages. In 2018, they went back, did analysis of the development that had occurred to date, and reaffirmed those proposals or those regulations, and then also implemented the unbundled parking requirement. Next slide. For Portland, there's a slightly different story. In Portland, in 2003, they implemented within 500 feet of frequent transit, an exemption to all the parking regulations. In 2012, so nine years later, they saw their very first project come in with a zero parking minimum. That means that zero parking was provided, so nine years till they saw their first project like that. With that, the planning department was tasked to go back and look a little bit more closely at building permits, the cost of parking, et cetera, and revise, and they proposed a revised ordinance that required for 30 units or less that those projects be exempt from parking. Projects that were greater than 30 units had to go through a process to reduce parking as low as .2 parking spaces per unit. When we've done some of our follow-up informational interviews concerning this recommendation or this regulation, it was noted by staff that their initial proposal was 40 units or less, and they've seen a number of projects come in at that 30-unit threshold, meaning that they've really lost out on 10 units with every project moving forward because that zero parking minimum is such an important factor in the development. Next slide. In addition to our peer cities, we've seen a number of pieces of legislation that were adopted in the last couple of years, SB 35, AB 2372, the COS Act, as well as AB 2162, which is specifically related to permanent supportive housing. With all three of these pieces of legislation, a number that are in front of the legislatures for this year, we've seen a significant focus on targeting parking and reducing those parking requirements to specifically affect affordability of housing. Next slide. As I mentioned, we did a statistical analysis of the factors that go into parking demand or reliance on the car. And after looking at about 20 or so statistical variables, we identified that four variables were really key and fundamental, and we'll carry those through to our transportation amenities, and I'll talk about that more. Those four factors are the percentage of households that are family, so if your family increases, your reliance on the car increases in number of persons. Jobs within a mile, jobs reachable within a 30-minute transit trip, and the median household income. You'll see on this slide, and we can also refer back to it later, those areas that are in dark green have a higher need for amenities or transportation amenities, or TDM, to complete the neighborhood. Next slide. So in that parking demand, we then tested that on 41 sites, citywide, 35 outside of the downtown area, and six within the downtown area. Those sites were selected based on the model, so based on those four factors, and located throughout the city. We tested both on a weekday and a weekend, from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, when people would most likely be occupying their parking spot. Next slide. So the findings from the testing outside of downtown of the 35 sites, and we compared the observed to the number provided, and 89% of those sample sites had a lower demand or occupancy than not just the current regulatory requirement, but a reduced requirement as well. With the sites that were higher than that, we noticed that there were only a 10% increase over that reduced ratio. And so really what that told us as a conclusion from the testing was that we could go further, further than just a reduction in the parking regulation, that a zero minimum, a market-based parking approach, would be appropriate for the city of San Diego. Next slide. So here's a summary, I know it's small on the screen, of the current regulations in the city. And the, of the three columns, to the left outlines all of the different residential use types, and they're based on the size or number of units or number of bedrooms. The second column is the current regulations, and those are outside of our transit priority areas. And those range anywhere from 1 to 2.25 parking spaces per unit. For those areas in the transit, so the last column, the reduced ratio respectively is .75 up to 2 parking spaces per unit. Excellent. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brad Richter of Civic San Diego to talk about the downtown testing.
Thank you, Alyssa. I want to talk about the downtown testing we did. We looked at six different elements in the downtown area.
Not sure if your mic is on.
I'm sorry about that. There we go. Brad Richter, Civic San Diego, again, can speak about the six projects we looked at downtown. We looked at fairly recently constructed projects to see where the trends are going, and we looked at both at five apartment buildings and one condominium building. As you can see on the charts here, when we surveyed the properties late at night, both on the weekday and weekend, we found that the demand was less than one space per unit. And this led us to believe that parking maximums that many other cities are doing now also could be implemented in the downtown area. Currently, we require one space per unit downtown regardless of its size, and for small lot properties, we have a 50% reduction in that minimum requirement. But as mentioned earlier, parking is very expensive, especially downtown where a lot of it is in underground structures. That can range from $40,000 to $90,000 per parking space. Right now, with the development that's occurring downtown, we estimate about $300 million is being spent just on building parking for that development. We've also found that as lots are getting smaller downtown and densities are increasing, which we all support very strongly, is that we're getting a lot more projects proposing above-grade parking, and that's in a podium structure. So your first, your floors two through up to floor eight even on some projects are parking garages. And that's a real urban design issue for downtown, takes eyes off the street and creates a dead zone. And so while we are requiring that all these parking garages be designed so they could be convertible in the future with level floor plates and floor-to-floor dimensions, same as the residential floors, it is creating a visual and potential noise problem. In downtown, we also have the highest transit-rich area of the county, of course, with commuter rails, San Diego Trolley, rapid bus, bus, local bus services. In addition to ride-share, we also have the FRED program, which is Free Ride Everywhere Downtown, a fleet of electric shuttle buses that'll take you anywhere within the downtown area. We have a high, high number of both bike share and scooters available in the downtown, and we're under construction in the downtown mobility plan, which is a series of protected bike lanes to connect all the neighborhoods in downtown. We also have several parking garages downtown, another one to be built within two years. And there's a real good opportunity for shared parking between office developments and residential, where residential is heavier use at night, while of course offices are in the daytime, and the opportunity to share those parking spaces so they're used a majority of the day. In looking at other cities, much as we did for minimum parking, we also looked at maximums. So not only Seattle, Portland, but San Francisco, Oakland, Sacramento, Austin, Texas, and Minneapolis not only do not require parking in their downtowns, they set a maximum ranging from a quarter of a space per unit in San Francisco to approximately one and a half space in Austin and Minneapolis.
And so now we'll summarize what the proposed recommendation is for you. The citywide proposal outside of the downtown is to allow for zero parking minimums, the inclusion of transportation amenities based on the scaled structure of the four factors that I presented earlier for residents that can benefit both the residents and in some cases the community as well. And where parking is provided, that parking must be unbundled. And again, that parking, when you unbundle parking, it allows the resident to choose if they want maybe less parking, one instead of two, or maybe even a zero parking situation that's more conducive to what their lifestyle is or their resources. With respect to the affordable housing, so as not to incentivize one type of housing over affordable, we have matched the citywide proposal to be zero parking minimums. With respect to transportation amenities and unbundling, we have not required those for the affordable projects, and that's really because many of those funding opportunities for affordable projects through the NOFAs, et cetera, provide weighted scoring that is reflective of projects that already have something that looks similar through transportation demand management, such as subsidies or shuttles. For the downtown area, we are proposing to allow a zero parking minimum. We've also proposed a maximum of one parking space per unit. In addition to that, and since we came before the Land Use and Housing Committee, we have worked through to provide for a buy-right process that when you exceed that one parking space per unit, you shall meet all of the following requirements. And that's 80% of the downtown maximum, base maximum FAR before any bonuses. All spaces above the maximum must be accommodated in underground parking, again, not to affect the experience of the sidewalks and surrounding areas. 20% of the parking must provide for EV charging conduit. And lastly, a minimum of four points of transportation amenities must be provided. Similar to the citywide, all parking that is provided must be unbundled. Next slide. For the transportation amenities, we've provided those in our land development manual and appendix Q. And what we are doing, based on some comments that we received since committee, is we are removing all car-related transportation amenities. So specifically, any ride-share info, we'll just limit that to the transformation, transit information. We'll be removing the car share transportation amenity, the guaranteed ride home, and the subsidies for TNCs or for Uber and Lyft. Also, the passenger loading area would be removed as those are all car-related. So we'll really be focusing on those transit and active transportation, so pedestrian bicycle improvements as transportation amenities. We'll also be expanding the transit infrastructure improvements to include active transportation improvements as outlined in our community plans. So with that, I want to walk you through one of the example projects. This was one of the tested sites. We had 127 units in this project. Through that testing, we observed that 172 parking spaces were utilized, which is a 1.35 parking spaces per unit. And this is one of our mid-city areas, and 106 spaces were unutilized from those that were developed. Next slide. So applying the transportation amenities calculator, we created a calculator that allows a development professional to come in, and all they have to put in is their APN, their number of units and number of bedrooms. And the calculator will score for the developer, what will provide them the score for the transportation amenities. They can print that out and submit it over the counter with their development application. If you want to key through one more, one or two more on this slide. So you'll see here, that's the information in green that the developer puts in. And then this project required a score of four points of transportation amenities. Next slide. So here is the four criteria that we talked about earlier from the statistical analysis. And the transportation amenity calculator actually has taken these four criteria and it's embedded into the calculator. Next slide. So for that project, the project had a cumulative score of seven. Next slide. Which then triggers, it's between four and seven, the left-hand column, and in the ordinance it would be required to provide four points of transportation amenities. Next slide. So here's the list of transportation amenities. Again, we'll be revising that in the land development manual, and the scores are down the right side, and it allows a developer to select from this menu a variety of transportation amenities to meet that score of four. Next slide. To summarize, the advisory boards and committees that reviewed this project, those votes are listed on the screen, including the CMT and Tech, CPC, Downtown Community Planners Council, and Civic San Diego Board. The Planning Commission did vote 6 to 0 to support staff's proposal with amendments related to the provision of adequate accommodations for ADA in the design phase, annual monitoring in the Housing Report and Climate Action Plan mode share, consider revisiting parking maximums in the downtown, and consider increasing the amount of electric vehicle charging stations and bicycle storage spaces in the transportation amenities. For Land Use and Housing, we have included, the vote was 3 to 1, to support staff proposal and forward the item on to city council. In addition, the planning department will be preparing an informational item related to a transportation equity fee. This is based on comments we've received since Land Use and Housing, and we will bring that item to a city council committee within the next three months. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the ordinance for the parking regulatory reform for multifamily residential development in transit priority areas. Before I conclude, I'd like to read into the record a correction to the PDOs in the downtown area that was inadvertently noted as 142.0528. It should actually be read as 142.0528C. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I understand that the city attorney has some comments.
Yes. On Friday, March 1st, our office submitted a corrected copy of the Transit Priority Area Parking Ordinance and cover memo to the city clerk summarizing changes made to the ordinance after the docket was first published by the city clerk. The March 1st corrected copy is the operative version of the ordinance for purposes of your discussion today. And if the council wishes to include the correction on the subdivision C, we can include those in the appropriate locations in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take up public testimony. Clerk, please proceed.
Yes, we'll begin with opposition speakers. Again, folks, one minute apiece, so start thinking about that now. And as I call your name forward, the entire front row is vacant, so please come forward and sit in the front row. That way it'll help facilitate the speaking time. We'll begin with Teresa Kidos, and Teresa will be followed by Louis Rodolico, who should be coming to the front row, followed by Matt Valenti, followed by Kent Roderickx. Go ahead, Ms. Kidos, you'll have one minute.
Good afternoon. A few questions for you. So who will end up benefiting from the $90,000 savings? How long will it take to bring the transit infrastructure online? Who ensures that Sandag allots more funds to MTS to expand their service? Where will the city find savings to make up for the additional greenhouse gas emissions caused by people circling? How will the city handle the anger and divisiveness that will grow as fights for parking spaces simmer in the neighborhood? How will the city comply with the ADA when not providing parking spaces for those with a disability? If the in-lug fee is not removed and developers are not required to build the 10% affordable housing, how does this help our city's housing crisis? How many people in the city have family in areas where there is no transit, or go to Costco, or have several children who go to different schools or different soccer practices, and thus are not able to live without a car? Thank you.
Thank you. Louis Rodolico is our next speaker, followed by Matt Valenti, followed by Kent Roderickx, followed by Gary Reese. And Mr. Rodolico, as time seated by Rose Hall, is Rose present? Could you raise your hand, Rose? Thank you, ma'am. You'll have two minutes, sir.
Good afternoon. Listen, the fights in the neighborhood over parking is going to happen if we have the zero thing. We have to have parking at current levels. Now, there's a lot of ways Now, there's a lot of ways around it, but the bottom line is the neighbors are going to be really pissed off, and they have a very right to be. Now, we've, there's been some allusion here to the fact that we can build high-rise development with parking garages that later can have the spaces converted into living units. Now, today, you've got to have a car, okay? That's the way it is. Two generations from now, people will be driving cars probably the way people ride horses now, in homage to the past. But for now, we have to have cars. And we need buildings that can adapt over time to the change in society. So let's look at putting in the ordinance clear descriptions of current levels of parking that we see as necessary. And then, over time, as owners pass the certain amount of restrictions from the local community groups, which is going to be a real jungle with the new plan updates, by the way, with you guys, they go through that with the local planning groups and planning and make a determination that any owner can now convert so many of their parking spaces back into living units, okay? This will bring us into the future in a smooth transition and cause a lot less stress in our community. Now, basically, only about, the average worker makes less than two-thirds of the earnings necessary for a median home currently. So you guys are on the right track trying to lower the price of housing. But eliminating parking could be a double-edged sword. Some folks are going to find themselves trying to sell a house without a parking spot five or 10 years from now, and they're not going to have it, and they're going to find out they're going to get really stuck with a big bill. So let's protect developers for themselves and from the future, and let's make sure that flex parking is part of what we go forward with here. Thank you. And I'd like to put this article on the record from the Claremont Times.
Thank you. If you just leave it there, sir, someone will come and get it. Matt Valenti is our next speaker. Mr. Valenti will be followed by Kent Rodericks, followed by Gary Reese, followed by Martha Welch. You'll have one minute, sir.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you, Council President Gomez and council members. My name is Matt Valenti, and I'm an attorney who is privileged in my practice to represent disabled individuals. And one thing that I've learned, as I've learned that disabled people know all too well, is that just saying that something is ADA compliant is not enough, and checking off the ADA box is not enough. And too often, problems arise and people realize that accommodation for the disabled was an afterthought. This ordinance makes glancing mention of ADA accommodations. I only have a little bit of time, so I would ask you, before you approve this, get an opinion from the city attorney's office. Talk to the Accessibility Advisory Board and the Office of Accessibility and ADA Compliance, which are in the mayor's office, which have not weighed in on this ordinance. This will have an impact on disabled people, and I strongly urge you to consider that before approving this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Rodericks is our next speaker. Mr. Rodericks will be followed by Gary Rice, who'll be followed by Martha Welch, who'll be followed by Kathy Ives. They should all be in the front row. You'll have one minute.
Hi there, everybody. I'm Kent Rodericks. It's a serious issue for me. You can see that I'm limited physically. And you notice that the mayor said a lot, the mayor's office said a lot. Hi, Mark. The one word that was not uttered and is never uttered is disabled. We're an afterthought, and we need to be, not an afterthought, we need to be considered. And we need to be considered in all areas of the city, from housing to parking to sidewalk access to everything. We need to be an equal to all of the other San Diego citizens. And we're actually 20% of the city population, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Reese will be our next speaker, followed by Martha Welch, followed by Kathy Ives, followed by Jack Shu, followed by Clifford Wyler. Go ahead, sir, you'll have a minute.
My name is Gary Reese, and I live in Pacific Beach. And I'm against a blanket proposal that you guys, that has been proposed, like it's listed here in the Union Tribune newspaper. I live in Pacific Beach, and the transit's not that good in Pacific Beach, and parking is a very big problem. And what will happen is that people will park and move other people out of where they can park into another neighborhood. And it'll be really hard to find parking. And also, I don't really believe your numbers. When you went to that place and you counted the cars, did you just see how many of those condos were vacant, or the units were vacant, or the people on vacation? So I don't really believe your numbers are accurate. And you don't talk to people. You should go to people and see if they're happy with their parking situation in downtown. Maybe they're not happy with it. Anyway, I'm really against this, and I hope that you vote no against this. Start small. Start small. If you do, start small. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Welch is our next speaker. Ms. Welch will be followed by Kathy Ives, followed by Jack Shu, followed by Clifford Wyler, followed by David Swerens. Go ahead, ma'am.
Martha, I don't like the ruling of macarons and units, because right now, if your childcare has to build two bounds and two... You don't have that right now for families. And also, right now, the jobs are not known about Serrano, and there's no buses goes there anywhere. They can't ride a bus to those jobs up north. There's no buses to go to Savannah up there. There's no buses up there, so you can't do that. You need a car for jobs, because most of the jobs are up in that area, and there's no buses, don't go there. That's the problem with MTS, they don't have all the buses where all the jobs are. They don't have, they don't have buses to go there. Even the new one goes up north, it's not exactly where the jobs are also. There are some, when the trolley goes purple, goes up, maybe they'll have some. But right now, they don't have buses to where the jobs are. So you need to think about this also, because the people have to have cars.
Thank you. Kathy Ives is our next speaker, followed by Jack Shu, followed by Clifford Wyler, followed by David Swerens, followed by Gerald Schoen.
I wanted to let you know that I am opposed to these parking regulations. While I do think that cars will be out in the future, they're not going to be out in California way in the future. We'll be dead before that happens. The sales of cars in California has remained steady over the last three years, at 2 million cars. That tells you that people are still buying cars. And they don't just have one car, or two cars, or three cars. So I am very opposed, because the parking is an issue. The other issue is this unlimited density. We have all known that developers and the city and the council has let it go through the affordable housing. You should not, because you have let this affordable housing limitation go not be fulfilled, that none of the residents should be punished for that, for that matter. And we all know that these developments, it will not be in five years or 10 years. We already seen it at the Mission Bay Elementary School, where supposedly we have parking, but that parking has now been cut down. And so, and we already have a major parking issue in Mission Beach, and in Pacific Beach, and in Claremont, and in Ocean Beach, and in Mission Valley.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Jack Shu is our next speaker. Mr. Shu will be followed by Clifford Wyler, followed by David Swerens, followed by Gerald Schoen, followed by Richard Lawrence.
Good evening, council members and Council President, Gaujet Gomez. I'm representing the Cleveland National Forest Foundation. I want to take your attention to a letter that was submitted on this item. Let's face it, this is not a good plan as it's being put forward. Seattle and Portland have very different mode shares for transit than San Diego. They are not a pure comparison. And this issue that taking away parking will automatically promote more people to take transit, that's false. That doesn't take place. We know that. Let's have a better plan worked out in which we do reduce parking better, in a way in which it will promote transit use, and make that change. So I think this item needs to be, needs more work, and I urge you to continue the item for further study. Thank you.
Thank you. Clifford Wyler is our next speaker. He'll be followed by David Swerens, followed by Gerald Schoen, followed by Richard Lawrence.
Thank you. You should all have, what I distributed before the meeting has a golden rod cover. I had a feeling I'd only have one minute. And this is the documents that the public has, that you had. I distilled down into these few easy-read pages the evidence from these documents that this plan is unsupported. For example, the peer cities. How do you compare San Diego, which is 325 square miles, to Seattle, which is 83 square miles, and Portland, which is 133 square miles? In terms of the unused parking spaces, there is no indication that there was any consideration of the occupancy rate of the units. What if a unit was 20% empty? Of course, there's going to be 20% less parking available. And if you look at the details, the investigations were probably one single photograph in time, and I think at the end, towards the end of July, which is a vacation period. In terms of the costs, how do you presume that the decrease in cost is going to be filtered to the savings of the residents? I have more. Please read that document before you vote. Do you all have it?
Thank you, sir. David Swerens is our next speaker. Mr. Swerens will be followed by Gerald Schoen, followed by Richard Lawrence, followed by Pam Wilson.
Honorable Council President Gomez and members of the City Council, I'm here representing the Greater Golden Hill Planning Committee, the city-recognized planning group for the neighborhoods of Golden Hill. GGHPC acted in what was viewed by members as a middle path to recommend and request that the TPA parking standards program be implemented as a trial program, to be formally reviewed in a five-year time, determine its effectiveness relative to stated goals, and also see if there were unintended consequences. This is very similar to the earlier recommendation adopted by the Community Planners Committee. I could have sent a slip either way. The Golden Hill community neighborhoods were largely developed before the car was king, and some of these ratios are already in effect. Currently, our neighbors, as well as employees and patrons of the many businesses, compete for on-street parking. Often, the council members have suggested programs be evaluated over time. Our planning group would recommend the TPA standards be evaluated in that same manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Schoen is our next speaker, followed by Richard Lawrence, followed by Pam Wilson, who should be in the front row, followed by Richard Hansen. And Mr. Schoen, you have time seated by Lynn Bovee. Is Lynn present? Please raise your hand. Thank you, ma'am. You'll have two minutes.
Good afternoon, council. I'm in favor of increased housing density. I think that's actually a good thing. I've lived in large cities like Rio de Janeiro, where they have millions of people and good transportation for most of the city. Unfortunately, we don't really have that here in San Diego today. And try to come from my neighborhood, Normal Heights, down to here, it would take me over 45 minutes, if I could, by bus, if there was no traffic. I can do it in a car in 10. I think that we need to have public transportation improved. I know that there's amenities that you guys have been talking about, but I think that needs to come before the change in parking rules can be in place. One of the things I also found is in the proposals that are out there available online, the map is extremely vague. It's hard to identify areas where they're identifying as TPA. In my particular neighborhood in Normal Heights, it appears that they've done everything as the crow flies. If you look at where the, some of the circles they're drawing to, they're assuming a flat neighborhood when there's actually a 400-foot drop in elevation and no pedestrian routes to get down to areas that, so canyon rims overlooking the San Diego River are included in those maps. And I think that's actually kind of disheartening, if that's allowed to see multifamily units being built in those areas with no parking. I think that's really all I have to say, but I do appreciate the work of the city trying to find additional housing, but I think that public transportation improvements need to come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Lawrence is our next speaker. Mr. Lawrence will be followed by Pam Wilson, who should be in the front row, followed by Richard Hansen, followed by Ellis Rose.
In 2002, I was appointed on a city task force on affordable housing because of a severe shortage of affordable housing. Once our recommendations came forth to the City Council, over 17 years, very little, in my mind, nothing was done to address that extreme shortage. And part of the reason is because no single step is a good step. Parking alone is not a good step. We need a comprehensive package that includes additional revenues to subsidize what thousands of our families cannot pay for rent or to own a place. It means the sacrifice of maybe losing your office by requiring that there be additional taxes, taxes to support the subsidies required by those families which cannot afford housing in this community now. It also requires a gigantic infrastructure bond.
Thank you, sir. Pam Wilson is our next speaker. Ms. Wilson will be followed by Richard Hansen, followed by Ellis Rose, and then we'll be turning to speakers in favor, beginning with Haney Hong.
Good afternoon, council members, Council President Gomez, and all of you. Thank you so much for your service, as always. I also favor affordable housing and action on our climate action, but I just think this is completely insufficiently targeted to motivate mass transit use. If you really were going to be serious about this, these units with zero housing should have a requirement that you can't own a car and live there. I see nothing in the materials by staff that I recognized as addressing the impact on street parking. Maybe some parking garages are empty, but what does that tell us about what's going to happen? Is somebody's going to say, well, I don't want to pay extra for, to park my car. I'll just park it on the street and get up early. I lived in San Francisco when it was like that, and a lot of my friends lost their cars because they didn't get out there in time and they got too many parking tickets. So I just think the concept is good, but it's not ready. The, as I said about the amenities, I think are improperly targeted, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Hansen is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Ellis Rose, then we turn to in-favor speakers, beginning with Haney Hong, followed by Sean Caraffin.
Thank you. I am Richard Hansen. I'm a real estate broker, and I'm all for development, but this is a land grab. In my professional opinion, I think this is a very bad idea for San Diego. This is not New York City. This will destroy one of the last original California seaside towns, just like they did to my hometown of Santa Monica. When I was growing up, learning how to skate and surf in Dogtown, Santa Monica was a beautiful little sleepy seaside town. Try finding a parking spot in Santa Monica now. Try drive, try even driving a few blocks in Santa Monica. It's a nightmare with almost no parking, way overbuilt. The reason why I moved to Pacific Beach is because it reminded me of Santa Monica when I was a kid. I could not in good conscience recommend to a client to buy a condo with no parking. Can you imagine the disclosures the brokers are going to have to have the buyer sign to keep from getting sued when their agents tell the clients there's plenty of street parking? Try finding a parking spot in Pacific Beach now, let alone after the triple density. Full disclosure, I am running for mayor. Thank you.
Ellis Rose is our next speaker. She'll be, or he'll be followed by Haney Hong, followed by Sean Caraffin, followed by Joe Lacava.
Good afternoon. I recognize that there are two very strong pressures that push this hasty decision. One is reducing carbon emissions, and the second is increasing production of low-income affordable housing. And I hear a lot of promotion of this tied to low-income affordable housing production, including by Mayor Faulkner. I noticed that a lot of committees and organizations were consulted regarding this policy proposal. But despite the fact that the city gives a lot of lip service to Housing First, once again, the city ignores the Housing First best practice of inclusion of homeless citizens in decision-making, implementation, and assessment of policies and programs that affect them. For low-income San Diegans, this will contribute to social isolation, and social isolation increases the likelihood of formerly homeless tenants failing and returning to the streets. Social isolation is not just about socializing, it's also about receiving transportation needed for other needs. Please do not try to reduce carbon emissions on the backs of the poor.
Thank you. Before turning to our in-favor speakers, let me also note that Patricia Smith and David Breslow submitted speaker slips in opposition but did not wish to speak. Mr. Hong, you're our first speaker in favor. You'll have one minute. You'll be followed by Sean Caraffin, followed by Joe Lacava, followed by Marcella Escobar-Eck. You should all be in the front row.
Council President Gomez, members of the City Council, my name is Haney Hong. I'm the president and chief executive officer of the San Diego County Taxpayers Association. And San Diegans, taxpayers in San Diego trust the association to look at effective and efficient public policy. And so I'm here today to indicate that we support these reforms. I think that the reason why they're deserving of your support is that the staff did a very thorough job here in terms of using data and data, a study to figure out what is statistically significant in terms of what drives market behavior. And I think that when we decide policy using these kinds of data, I think we will get to better solutions. And so this, the opportunity here of using data to drive how we think about things, and then use this to be able to help address the crisis in housing that we have, I think, is a laudable activity. And the San Diego County Taxpayers Association supports this policy reform, and we recommend you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Caraffin is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Joe Lacava, followed by Marcella Escobar-Eck, followed by Mike Nagy. All of you should be in the front row. Go ahead, sir, you'll have a minute.
Council President, council members, my name is Sean Caraffin with the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to thank the mayor and staff, Mike Canson, Alison Muto, for their leadership on this issue and for working with the chamber team on this issue. The chamber supported the 2015 Climate Action Plan. I personally went to many business groups around the city to make sure they understood the importance of making, of taking bold action on this issue. But we always knew that implementation would be the difficult part. Change is hard. Change is hard. There are very few actions that this council could take that are more important to achieving this vision than passing this item before you today. Allowing the market to decide how much parking we need in transit priority areas shouldn’t be controversial, except that it represents real change, and real change is exactly what we need to alleviate our housing affordability crisis and to change and make a city better for the vast majority of people for which owning a car is a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Lacava is our next speaker, followed by Marcella Escobar-Eck, followed by Mike Nagy, followed by Sherm Harmer, followed by Henesh Pulakal. You should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. If you believe in equity, if you believe that every action you take must move the city to the goals of the Climate Action Plan, if you believe that we need more housing that is more affordable to more San Diegans irrespective of their income level, then you cannot support today’s action as presented. Why? The proposal does not include parking maximums. Only with parking maximums will the proposal be equitable and create mode shift across all housing price points. We don’t achieve the mode shifts called for in the Climate Action Plan by allowing the more fortunate to stay autodependent. For once, I agree with Civic San Diego on the right approach. Be bold, be fair, eliminate parking minimums as proposed, but also impose parking maximums. Thank you, and I want to thank staff for the good work they did on this.
Thank you. Marcella Escobar-Eck is our next speaker, followed by Mike Nagy, followed by Sherm Harmer, followed by Henesh Pulakal, followed by Jeff Fair. You’ll have one minute, ma’am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Gomez, Council members. My name is Marcella Escobar-Eck, and I’m here speaking as an individual with thirty years of experience in the land use field. I think this is a good and thoughtful proposal that has been vetted. It’s gone through many, many professional organizations, people who are practitioners in multiple areas of the field. The reality is tenants and residents will self-select. Not having a car is not for everybody, and that’s okay, but keep in mind that the geographic area of San Diego... One speaker said that it’s not comparable to Seattle. We’re not comparing it to all of Seattle or all of San Diego. It’s a very focused area where it’s a transit priority area, and I can say that for somebody like my mom and one of my daughters, they don’t drive, they don’t have cars. They make a choice about doing that. I think the time has come. I’ve continued to say that in San Diego, what we have is a walking problem, not a parking problem. The reality is, if you choose to drive, you can usually find a space if you’re not trying to find it right in front of the business that you’re going to. As we move more and more to mixed use, I think the time is right for this proposal, and I urge you to support it. I’m a little concerned about some of the changes that I heard about the autodependency. I know I’m out of time, but that seemed kind of new, and I do have some concerns.
Thank you. Mike Nagy is our next speaker, followed by Sherm Harmer, followed by Henesh Pulakal, followed by Jeff Fair, followed by Lev Gershman.
Good afternoon. Mike Nagy with the Southern California Rental Housing Association. We’re here on behalf of the association, we’re here to speak in support of the recommendations and hope that you adopt them today. Cutting down my comments, I’m just... That these recommendations provide greater flexibility for builders to determine what type of projects they can build in these transit areas, and as well as will give also renters and homeowners the option to decide whether they want parking spaces with their new homes. And so in an effort, if the city is going to be to meet its existing housing and climate action needs, then it needs to adopt ordinances like this and other policies that will produce more housing for people and not house automobiles. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherm Harmer is our next speaker. Mr. Harmer will be followed by Henesh Pulakal, followed by Jeff Fair, followed by Lev Gershman, followed by Vicky Granowitz, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. It’s important to remember that when you create a climate action plan, or you have smart growth principles, or you’re doing multifamily work, that we have to have some policies and guidelines as builders to know what to do. And this is an excellent example of teamwork and cooperation between the building industry, affordable housing advocates, urban planners, to put together a program that is explicit in what it could do and where we can understand it and build it. Builders today are having a hard time finding land, and this will be an incentive for people to look first at transportation corridors, and that’s the benefit of what I see we’re doing today. So keep that in mind, this is complimentary to a climate action plan and to multifamily development and to urban villages. Thank you.
Thank you. Henesh Pulakal is our next speaker, followed by Jeff Fair, followed by Lev Gershman, followed by Vicky Granowitz, followed by Isaac Wang.
Good afternoon. This is Henesh Pulakal, and here as an individual, even though I’m a long-term resident of Pacific Beach. Just to reiterate what everyone’s been saying, this isn’t a solution for everyone. This is for the demographic that have self-selected not to have cars. There’s more and more people that are younger than me that are not having cars, not having their driver’s license. You see the stats that sixteen-year-olds of that demographic, only twenty-five percent are getting their driver’s license. These are real numbers, right? And owning a car is expensive. If you can save money on your rental unit by thirty-five thousand to not have a parking spot, and you also save eight thousand dollars a year, it costs on average to own a car, now you’re talking about real savings, right? It takes our less affordable city to a slightly more affordable, and this isn’t a solution for everyone. You can choose, like that last person said, to get a spot without a parking spot and choose to work in place, or maybe your work aligns with your transit location, and you can make it work. You don’t go there and find out as a surprise you don’t have parking. You plan for it, pay less, and it works out because that works with your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Fair is our next speaker. Mr. Fair will be followed by Lev Gershman, followed by Vicky Granowitz, followed by Isaac Wang, followed by Stephanie Smith.
For your peace of mind, I’m not contagious. I had some lung surgery, and so I’m protecting myself from your germs. Over the past forty years, I’ve been involved in the development of over six thousand residential units in San Diego County. Each one of those depends upon a market study. One of the factors in the market study is, how many parking places do you need? It’s different for every project. I’m entitled in a project in the south part of the city, three hundred and eighty units, two and three bedrooms. My tenants are Hispanic and Asian, large extended families. I cannot apply this new policy, or I couldn’t rent my units because they have three and four cars per family. On the other side of the spectrum, I’m working on a project in North City. My tenants will be single millennials that use Uber and Lyft and Carpool, and they’re very environmentally sensitive. I’m building small studio and one-bedroom apartments because that’s what the market demands. So the development industry will make decisions on when to apply this ordinance and when not to, based upon economics. Thank you.
Thank you. Lev Gershman is our next speaker. He’ll be followed by Vicky Granowitz, followed by Isaac Wang, followed by Stephanie Smith, followed by Pedro Tavoras, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Lev Gershman. I’m a small-scale developer. Every day, I take the risk of trying to deliver product that there’s a need for in the market. I would not put my family at risk trying to deliver housing that did not have a need in the market. We have a tremendous oversupply of luxury product, yet a massive shortage of workforce housing. Parking code forces luxury product by requiring expensive parking, a cost of which is passed directly onto the resident. Let’s get rid of the minimum requirement in the TPA to open the door for more price points in housing. Luxury is a choice, not a requirement. Parking should match this concept, and I want to applaud staff for doing a great job on this research.
Vicky Granowitz is our next speaker. Ms. Granowitz will be followed by Isaac Wang, followed by Stephanie Smith, followed by Pedro Tavoras, followed by Alexandra Alamany.
Hi, I’m Vicky Granowitz. I’m representing Planning Commission. You saw the motion that Planning Commission had. We voted in favor of it unanimously. The truth is, for too long, we’ve been seeing developments come to us that aren’t dense enough, and when we ask, they say they don’t pencil out. We believe that this would actually help with penciling out. We did have a couple of things that we wanted you to consider, which is revisiting the maximum for downtown. We think the market should be able to decide, but we think that that’s something important. I had a couple of issues that Planning Commission did discuss, which is that the reasonable accommodations for the handicap when they’re done afterwards are never reasonable, and they’re never actually helpful. So we would ask that there be something done for that. And the other thing is that you have to look at amenities that are available, like banks and pharmacies and groceries, not just things that are available for transportation.
Thank you. Isaac Wang is the next speaker. Mr. Wang will be followed by Stephanie Smith, followed by Pedro Tavoras, followed by Alexandra Alamany, followed by Scott Darnell, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Isaac Wang. I come to you from the distant future of the year of our Lord, 2029, and I’ve traveled back in time ten years to warn you of impending disaster. You will have excess parking beyond your wildest imagination. In 2019, Uber Pool has brought the average cost of a round trip to below the daily cost of parking downtown. The math reveals something else. The total cost of owning a vehicle daily, which includes car payments, parking, fuel, maintenance, and insurance, has exceeded the cost of using rideshare on a daily basis. A mere five years later, in 2024, cars of achieved Level Five complete automation are in the beginning stages of regulatory approval in major cities. The consumer market begins to move away from buying cars as a product and begins to see transportation as a service. Five years later, in the year of our Lord, 2029, there are no more human drivers for a rideshare. Rather than stay parked for ninety-six percent of the day, an autonomous vehicle will continue to provide transportation services to other people. Without human labor, autonomous vehicles have brought down the average cost of rideshare to below a Fileo Fish on Fridays at McDonald’s. Owning a car has stopped making financial sense, even for the most change-resistant person. San Diego will still have a glut of parking.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie Smith is our next speaker, followed by Pedro Tavoras. Stephanie Smith? If Stephanie’s not present, then Pedro Tavoras, please come forward. He’ll be followed by Alexandra Alamany, followed by Scott Darnell, followed by Lorena Jaromillo, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, Council, my name is Pedro Tavoras. In 2013, I graduated from Woodbury University’s Master’s in Real Estate Development for Architects program. I know it’s a mouthful, but I’ve also been the head of our unofficial alumni association since that time, and I’m also an adjunct teacher in the program currently. For the ten-year anniversary of the program, three years ago, we compiled some statistics about our group. The program only graduates about ten students a year and has about ten faculty. And from the statistics taken in 2016, our group has completed about one hundred and ten new infill construction projects in San Diego, largely centered around downtown and the mid-city communities. We built over a quarter of a billion dollars, resulting in seven hundred built units and over two hundred affordable units in our project. I’m not here to officially speak on behalf of our group, but I can tell you that the majority of us strongly support the effort being forth here today. As a unique blend of architects or designers and developers, we approach projects differently than other developers. For too long, parking has been the first step in designing a project. While it has also always been cost prohibitive, it is especially design prohibitive. Allowing us to choose...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Alamany is the next speaker. He’ll be followed by Scott Darnell, followed by Lorena Jaromillo, followed by Jason Moun.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Alexandra Alamany, and I’m the co-founder of Hovensville Communities, an urban infill development company located in San Diego. I’m here to voice my support for the city’s proposed parking reform. Other cities, such as Seattle among others, across the nation, have embraced similar measures and have been very successful. For example, I have a family friend who’s a Seattle developer, was built over a thousand micro-units in the urban villages surrounding downtown Seattle located in TPAs. More importantly, he built the majority of those units in Seattle while the city was going through the process of implementing of various comprehensive transportation plans. Which brings me to my next point regarding the apprehension towards approving the city’s proposed parking reform. The chicken or the egg? Approve the parking reform first or implement a comprehensive transportation plan first? We need to do both at the same time, just like the other cities have done in the past. My call to action for City Council is to support this parking reform, which is just one small step towards resolving the housing, transportation, environmental issues hindering the transition of San Diego towards a world-class cosmopolitan city. San Diego is a world-class city.
Thank you, sir. Scott Darnell is our next speaker. Mr. Darnell will be followed by Lorena Jaromillo, followed by Jason Moun, followed by Gene Samuels. They should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Council, my name is Scott Darnell. I’m here to ask you to let the market dictate the true expected parking ratios for workforce housing that we hope to develop. Obviously, we’re in a crisis now. Technologies are much different than they were a year ago, let alone five years ago. Please listen to the recommendation of the approval to approve this from the local planning commission, and please vote yes for more affordable local housing for our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Jaromillo is our next speaker. She’ll be followed by Jason Moun, followed by Gene Samuels, followed by Rami Cortez, followed by Gilman Bishop, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, ma’am.
Good morning. My name is Lorena Jaromillo, and I support the city’s proposed parking reform. I am a millennial who was fed up with commuting two hours a day for work, so I moved downtown, got a job downtown, and now I’m looking at my options to getting rid of my car altogether. This is attractive to me because I will be reducing car payments, reducing insurance and bills, I will be reducing auto emissions and traffic congestion, and I will be able to walk in the area where I live.
Thank you. Jason Moun is our next speaker. Jason will be followed by Gene Samuels, followed by Rami Cortez, followed by Gilman Bishop, followed by Maya Rosas, who should all be in the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Jason Mouni, I am an architect and infill developer here in San Diego. I just wanted to speak to... Reiterate the fact that... First, thank you, planning staff. I think this is a really great advancement, and I’ve seen dozens and dozens of projects that I’ve looked at in the Uptown Mid-Cities Plan region that have been killed because of parking requirements, because of the upward pressures of costs on materials, shortages of labor. There’s really no option other than doing high-end. So if we want workforce housing, we need to start reducing parking. And to address the issue, I think the accessibility issue is very critical and very important. That’s another factor that on these small-scale projects, it basically eliminates much of the ability to provide that by requiring the ground floor to be parking rather than accessible units, whereas we usually wind up with one unit that’s maybe accessible and then the rest on a podium that’s not accessible. So I think this would help advance that as well.
Thank you. Gene Samuels is our next speaker, followed by Rami Cortez, followed by Gilman Bishop, followed by Maya Rosas, followed by Matthew Vasilekas.
Good afternoon. My name is Gene Samuels. I am a North Park resident. The population of San Diego will continue to grow, like it or not. We need to make room for all those additional people by high-density housing, either that or pave over the whole back country. So there will be high-density housing. We can make room for all those additional people, but we cannot make room for thousands of additional cars. I’m really excited to see that the city is doing so many things to enhance active transportation opportunities, including bicycle infrastructure and transit. It is possible to live in San Diego without a car. I did it for about four years, twenty years ago or so. So I know from personal experience it can be done. So thank you for this proposal, and I hope that it passes.
Thank you. Rami Cortez is our next speaker, followed by Gilman Bishop, Maya Rosas, Matthew Vasilekas, and Rami Cortez has time seated by Brian Ravelli. Is Brian present? If you raise your hand. Thank you, sir. You’ll have two minutes.
My name is Rami Cortez. I’m a small infill developer. I also live, work, and play downtown, and I’m part of Urban Land Institute’s Small-Scale Infill Council, which is made up of about twenty other small-scale infill developers. And every month, we get together to figure out how to resolve the housing crisis, as well as create thriving communities. And there’s something we do at the end of every meeting, and it’s called “What Keeps You Up at Night?” These are the three biggest challenges to development that we hear every month in and out. The first is escalating construction costs. The second is, how do we develop to the densities in the urban environment while we still have restrictions of suburban parking requirements? And the third is dealing with SDGNE. So I don’t think you can help me with the SDGNE today, but you can help the cost of projects as well as the parking requirements that are demanded. For example, I have a current project that’s near the corner of Texas and El Cajon Boulevard, a prime example where you would want the densities that are promoted in the community plan, the current North Park community plan. It’s a seven-thousand-square-foot site that allows for forty-eight studios that would be market-rate workforce housing. However, we’d have to provide twenty-four parking spaces. We completed a parking study, and if we dug underground from here to China, we would provide no more parking based on ramping and circulation. With only eight parking spaces that we can provide on-grid, we would only be able to build sixteen studios or eight luxury condos. This, you know, archaic parking standards, suburban, that are applied in these areas along transit priority areas is handcuffing us as small-scale urban developers, where in this location, you would have to assemble multiple properties to be able to build a project. And that's what you've seen in the past in areas like North Park, like La Boheme, which the neighborhood does not approve or like because it pulls the soul out of the neighborhood, and it's not fine-grained infill development within the fabric. I'd like to end with this, that we have a project under construction with three hundred square-foot studios and three hundred square-foot parking spaces. We need to ask ourselves, are we housing people or cars?
Thank you. Gilman Bishop is our next speaker, followed by Maya Rosas, followed by Matthew Vassalakis, followed by Kaylee Levy, followed by Aria Ponaki, who should all be in the front row.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Gilman Bishop. I'm a local urban infill developer and home builder. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce and the BIA. My group just finished eighty-one units in Point Loma, a mixed-income project, and I wanna, I wanna say that this is a very brave proposal. It takes great leadership to make tough decisions, and I definitely support this as one of the most progressive decisions I've seen come before San Diego in the time that I've lived here. I've spent twenty years trying to figure out how to build workforce housing without public subsidy, and it's almost impossible. I can tell you that this, that this parking reduction policy is mandatory if you're going to build low- and moderate-income housing at scale without public subsidy. It's mandatory. It's not optional. If you wanna, if you want to achieve that dream, then you have to do this. Whether it's uncomfortable or not, you have to do it. You can't build parking and hit eighty to one-hundred-twenty percent AMI, period, without public subsidy. And we've all seen it. We don't produce enough housing.
Thank you.
So this is mandatory if you want to build moderate-income housing.
Thank you. Maya Rosas is the next speaker, followed by Matthew Vassalakis, followed by Kaylee Levy, followed by Aria Ponaki, followed by Sharon Cooney.
Good afternoon. Maya Rosas, Director of Policy at Circulate San Diego. Circulate supports the city's bold parking reforms for new homes in transit priority areas. These parking reforms will allow San Diegans to choose whether they want to pay for car storage or not. The proposal will make living without a car easier for residents who choose to do so with the addition of transportation amenities like transit passes, bike storage, onsite daycare facilities, and transit infrastructure improvements. In addition to the amenities, proximity to TPAs makes this proposal make a lot of sense. We will never meet our Climate Action Plan goals without bold policies in the right places near transit. So we look forward to working with city staff to build on this proposal in the future with further reforms that will get the city even closer to affordability and meeting its climate action plan targets. Thank you to staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Matthew Vassalakis is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Kaylee Levy, followed by Aria Ponaki, followed by Sharon Cooney, followed by Hector M. Perez.
Good afternoon, council president, council members, city staff. My name is Matthew Vassalakis from Climate Action Campaign. CAC is here today to support the proposed reform of parking requirements in transit priority areas to induce real mode shift from cars to transit biking and walking so that the city can get back on track to hit the cap mode-share targets by 2035. These reforms will provide San Diego families with housing choices that encourage and support alternative transportation options, helping the city meet legally binding cap targets. It's essential to consider these reforms in the context of climate action and the desperate need for our community members to have affordable and sustainable transportation and housing options. We emphasize that the reform is just one component of what needs to be a greater series of policies. The forthcoming Transportation Master Plan will be critical in roadmapping cap mode-share targets. That plan must map both the density and transportation network changes needed to achieve the shifts promised in the cap. Thank you to city staff for their hard work. Please support the item today.
Thank you. Kaylee Levy is our next speaker, followed by Aria Ponaki, followed by Sharon Cooney, followed by Hector M. Perez, followed by Stephen Russell, who should all be in the front row. You'll have a minute.
Good afternoon, Council President Gomez and council members. My name is Calais Levy, and I'm here today on behalf of the Downtown San Diego Partnership. Our Board of Directors voted to support the proposed parking requirement reform for residential development in transit priority areas because parking can be a significant cost and hindrance to creating additional supply for our region. While the Partnership's Board is supportive of the item before you today and appreciative of the parking minimums being removed, they express serious concern that establishing parking maximums in downtown, as is outlined in the current proposal, removes necessary flexibility to address market demand and encourage development. Flexibility and regulation enables developers to react to both market conditions and the evolving preferences of San Diego residents. While we appreciate the efforts made by city staff and council to address concerns, our members believe that the necessary flexibility can be achieved by simply removing the maximum for downtown. We ask that you keep our concerns in mind today, and thank you for your time.
Aria Ponaki is our next speaker, followed by Sharon Cooney, Hector M. Perez, Stephen Russell, Matt Adams.
Hello, my name is Aria Ponaki. Now, I've come today as a private citizen to support the staff recommendations on parking regulatory reform. The city has seen explosive growth over the last fifty years under an auto-oriented infrastructure investments, but as we transition to becoming a denser, more prosperous city, the strategies that got us from point A to point B won't be the same that take us to point C. I'm the example of someone who doesn't have a car but has three parking spaces that come with my condo. I do not own a car due to lack of resources, but rather as a principal choice. As our population grows and technology changes, it can't be an expectation that we impose recurrence for new construction to mandate parking when we know we need to begin investing in alternatives that assume a future where private automobile ownership isn't the norm.
Thank you. Sharon Cooney is our next speaker. Ms. Cooney will be followed by Hector M. Perez, Stephen Russell, Matt Adams, Tim Hutter. All should be in the front row. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Sharon Cooney with the Metropolitan Transit System. We appreciate the city's efforts to promote transit use by its residents. This is, policy before you today is very consistent with our recently revised joint development policy, so we look forward to working with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector M. Perez is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Stephen Russell, Matt Adams, Tim Hutter, and Heather Riley. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here, especially after the hard work that has already been placed in front of us with this research-based proposal. I'm an associate professor at Woodbury School of Architecture. I've been in academia for twenty-five years. I'm also a small infill project developer in San Diego. Like Pedro had mentioned, our alumni over the last thirteen years now in the Masters in Real Estate Development have been developing small incremental projects that have reactivated some of San Diego's most underserved communities like Barrio Logan. We do unsubsidize affordable housing. That's our specialty. We do it by operating within the small-lot development. And a proposal like this would allow us to really continue providing the services and the much-needed housing that we have in San Diego.
Thank you, sir. Stephen Russell is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Matt Adams, Tim Hutter, Heather Riley, Sharon Gell. Mr. Russell, you have time seated by John Brady. Is John present? Could you raise your hand? Thank you, sir. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Council President and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here. I am Stephen Russell, Executive Director of the San Diego Housing Federation, and we advocate on behalf of the increased supply of housing for those least able to afford it. That is, the working families, seniors, veterans, people living with disabilities, transition-aged youth, and those people who have recently been homeless. We are here to support the San Diego Housing Federation, is here to support the reform of parking standards as proposed today because we see it as a critical strategy toward producing more housing in gen, excuse me, more housing in general. I want to commend Alyssa Mutto and her department for their very methodical approach to developing this policy. We appreciate data-based policymaking and think that this is a very good case where we can move forward with some certainty that this will have positive impacts on the housing market. My personal history, I used to live in Hillcrest when I was a young adult and first moved out, actually moved back there now. But back then, we had a multitude of places without parking spaces where the waiters who worked there, where the students who went through UCSD, where a lot of the service personnel that actually made that neighborhood function were able to live there. And no, they did not, we did not have parking spaces back then. There is a market for that, and we have to recognize that that market is not being served by any of the new production if parking is being required. I think it's really important to note, somebody noted earlier that if you have to sell or rent a house, you know, that you might not be able to rent it for as much if you don't have a parking space associated with it. And that's exactly the point, right? That a house that is resold without a parking space will not have the same market value as a house with a space. It starts to differentiate the market a little bit more. And as noted earlier, we have a great surplus of luxury housing and a great shortage of housing available to lower-income households. So what we would ask is that you take action today. The housing crisis is a humanitarian crisis. No single action is a complete solution to the crisis, but we cannot afford to turn away from the solutions that are in front of us today. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Matt Adams is our next speaker. Mr. Adams will be followed by Tim Hutter, followed by Heather Riley, Sharon Gell, Randy Williams, Mark Schmidt. You'll have one minute, sir.
Ashley Gosso from Bosa submitting a slip. She wanted to know if she could cede her one minute to me, if that's okay?
I'll put it on the clock. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Matthew Adams, I'm with the San Diego Building Industry Association, here to speak in favor of the item before you today. Ninety-five thousand dollars. Let that number sink in for a second. That's how much it costs on the high end to put in a parking spot. That's what we're talking about here, is one of the most expensive components of development and one of the most significant impediments to our quest for housing affordability, middle-income housing. The middle class needs housing, and it is in short supply. The proposal before you today will take a significant step towards achieving the goal of trying to incentivize naturally affordable housing, which San Diego sorely needs. The numbers, the production numbers are disturbingly low. The preliminary January numbers for the city of San Diego, thirty-seven multifamily permits pulled in January in a city of 1.3 million people. We need to do something. We need to do it now. We see the concerns and suffering all around us. This is a good step towards that. So we're very supportive of this proposal before you. We do want to raise some concerns over the parking maximum discussion that you've heard. We're very much appreciative of trying to address that. You don't want a parking maximum to be a disincentive to the production of two- and three-bedroom units, family units, because we're trying to get more families downtown. We would ask that you monitor that, maybe make it a component of your annual housing report to make sure that the parking maximum is not really being a, an impediment to the creation of family housing. So with that, we ask that your strong support for this and that we focus on, let's making housing our people as important as to house our cars.
Thank you. Tim Hutter is our next speaker. Mr. Hutter will be followed by Heather Riley, Sharon Gell, Randy Williams, Mark Schmidt.
Good afternoon. Tim Hutter here, on behalf, from Allen Mackens. As you all know, the housing crisis requires action, not inaction. You heard from a lot of folks here today who were talking about how we need transportation first, but you should also be aware, and you've all experienced, many of those same people will be here when the transportation matters are coming before you, saying, "The data doesn't bear it out. The ridership isn't there. We should wait. Let's wait and see if we have more housing and there's more people who want it." So we need to take action, and this is the first step today. You heard earlier that we need to protect developers from themselves. I represent a lot of those developers, and I can tell you, you've heard from a lot of them here today. The small-scale folks, their main constraint is from their lenders, from their investors, who are saying, "How can we make money on these deals?" It is not a sense that they're gonna build something where no one will rent it, where no one will buy it, and that's a strong protection that's already built in. We're trying to get the city out of the business of regulating housing. And last, I would say the same thing as Matt, that the parking maximum is something we should monitor over the next couple of years. Follow the data, trust your staff, and approve this today. Thank you.
Heather Riley is our next speaker. Ms. Riley will be followed by Sharon Gell, followed by Randy Williams, followed by Mark Schmidt, and then I'll see if Stephanie Smith is back. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Heather Riley with Allen Mackens, here on behalf of myself today. Most of you know me as a land use attorney, and I'm usually being paid to be here on behalf of someone else. Today, I'm here on behalf of myself because, as a land use attorney, this stuff is right up my alley. This is exactly the type of steps that San Diego needs to take to become a more livable city. I encourage you to support staff's recommendation because it is the way forward. It's very short-sighted to say that, "We need parking today, so we can't do this." That's the wrong attitude. Instead, we need to say, "We need parking today, but we need to change that mentality," and the only way to do that is to make a fundamental shift in our thinking. This is that fundamental shift, and I encourage you to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Gell is our next speaker. She'll be followed by Randy Williams, followed by Mark Schmidt, followed by Stephanie Smith.
The city of San Diego doesn't need a one-size-fits-all parking regulations. While most households in San Diego have cars, not every household does, particularly in urban areas that are close to stores, jobs, and public transit. People should not have to pay for parking that they don't use. As an earlier speaker said, taxpayers subsidize public parking. Public transit in San Diego now. Therefore, if transit has more customers because we allow more housing near transit, taxpayers will save money. These regulations will be good for those who don't have cars, but they'll be good for everyone in the city of San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Williams is our next speaker. Mr. Williams will be followed by Mark Schmidt, who will be followed by Stephanie Smith.
I applaud the city for its goals with affordable housing as well as civic action plans. I want to commend the city planning department as well as Civic San Diego. The minimum parking requirements will allow market-based solutions to apply. As a developer, however, I'm concerned about the maximums. In placing caps, you restrict market solutions, and deviations are not always guaranteed. If you require a podium to be forty to fifty feet tall that includes below and above-grade parking, you may end up with wasted podium space. The maximums we're concerned raised, the land use committee as well as the BIA, and rightfully so. You may end up with unintended consequences, such as units that do not meet all residents' needs or steer people away from downtown. Again, I applaud the city for its goals and its efforts. I just would encourage them to reconsider the cap.
Thank you. Mark Schmidt is our next speaker. Mr. Schmidt will be followed by Stephanie Smith.
Yes, I appreciate everything that staff and civic is doing downtown. They've done an excellent job, but to limit parking, you're gonna eliminate some families from living downtown that require two cars, you know, for a family, you know? I think it's a mistake to have a cap, especially in podiums, too, when you have a thirty-acre site and you have a podium on it, and there's a minimum requirement of forty to fifty feet, and you put three stories underground and two or three stories above. What do you do with the excess space when you have depths of two-hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty feet? So for Pete's sake, it doesn't make sense. At least allow above-ground parking to the height of the podium so, you know, you can fill that empty space. And again, I appreciate everything everyone's doing, and the only thing I wish is there would be no cap on the podium and make it sensible, too, for the requirements so we're not pinned in a box. Thank you.
Stephanie Smith. Last call for Stephanie Smith. I'd called her earlier. She was not present. With that, that concludes the public testimony on this item. All of the speaker slips will be kept on file in my office.
Thank you. We'll start with council member comments and questions, starting with Council Member Moreno.
Thank you, staff, for all the time you put into developing this proposal. This is something that I have wanted to do for a long time, and I'm happy to see it here today. We have a housing crisis. We have to address it, and I believe this proposal will allow more units to be built and will decrease the cost of building these units. But before I get into my comments, I had a question. How, for staff, how do you intend to monitor the impact that these changes will have? I'd like to track and see if these actually result in more units being built and being more affordable.
Yes. Council Member Moreno, through our annual housing inventory report, we provide for the various types of housing that is constructed on an annual basis, and that's required by state law, and then we also have expanded the scope of that report, and so that's one place. The other place is to see how that affects change with respect to mode share, and we'll see that through our annual Climate Action Plan report and the information regarding that mode share.
I would ask that, going forward, the housing inventory report show the cost of units and the additional numbers produced specifically connected to the parking requirement changes. And there are many components to our housing crisis, but one thing that really seems to drive up the cost of housing is a requirement to produce parking spaces for each unit. As we move into the direction of building more density in transit priority areas and connecting people to transit, we need to recognize that the old standards for parking requirements are outdated. Unbundling parking, parking for, from the units is something that's gonna help people realize the true cost of parking. Once you have the option to buy a unit without a parking space for less money, it makes you weigh the cost of having a car versus finding other modes of transportation. And to staff's comment regarding changes to the transportation amenity list and doing a Nexus fee study for transportation equity fees, I think those are good ideas that improve this proposal. We, you know, we need to ensure that our transportation infrastructure, particularly in disadvantaged communities, continue to get built up, and I'm in full support of these changes, doing the study and discussing it at LUNH in the next few months, obviously, and again, thank you for your work, and I will move this item with staff's altered recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion. Council Member Sherman.[1738.13] Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah, thank you, and have some concerns about the maximums, but seeing the data for downtown and what's been done over the last several years, and I think I'm going to be okay with the way it is proposed. I'm happy to second the motion. I do have some concerns, though, about maximums and going into other communities other than downtown. I think the example that was given outside of downtown now is about utilization is about 1.35 parking spaces per unit is about the utilization rate outside of the downtown area, so that would concern me if we try and move out of downtown. But at the end of the day, we have seen, over and over again, the amount of money that gets thrown onto the cost of every project because of parking regulations. I mean, councilmember, former councilmember Alvarez and I first brought this forward as part of our 20-point plan to help try and reduce housing costs, and that was like two years ago, so I'm happy to see us here today. But when we, and it really struck me in two areas. In multifamily areas downtown, we're seeing people having to go subterranean and spend $90,000 a parking space. Now, when I first brought this forward, it was $75,000 a stall, but it's up to 90 now. And that just goes directly onto the cost of every unit, or the rent, or whatever. It goes right onto the consumer. It's not absorbed anywhere. So, and then, secondly, we saw a bunch of senior housing that was being built for seniors who are over 65, and you were finding a necessary need to comply with regulation, to put in all these parking spaces that weren't being utilized. And I'm a big fan of letting the market decide. If a developer thinks they can build something with zero parking spaces and sell it to a certain clientele, then let them take that risk. I, for one, wouldn't shop for a place that didn't have a parking spot to go with it, because in my job, and our jobs, with the amount of travel we have to do between events and all over the place, you couldn't really do it without a car. But I've seen young people who work on this floor, and work here at City Hall, who don't have a car, or if they do, it's in storage somewhere, because they never use it. It's much easier to Uber and to walk and work in your area. Now, down the road, they may have a family and kids, and suddenly, they need a car and extra transportation and those types of things, so they'll have that product available as well. But we need to have it to where we have product available for everybody at all walks. And right now, we have subsidized housing, and we have luxury housing, and we don't have that middle-market housing, and that's really what is needed. This, I think, is one of many steps that are needed to get to a point where we have housing affordability across the spectrum, where people don't need government subsidized housing, because the housing is available for you at every different price point along the road. But this is a very good step in the right direction. Thank you, staff, for all the work and effort and time you've put into this. I know it's been a long road, but I think we're finally to a point where we're starting to realizing that one of the biggest issues we have in this city is a lack of housing affordability across the board. I mean, people are moving out of the city. People are not coming here to the city because of the cost of housing. Over 40% of the cost of housing in this city is government regulation and red tape. This is a very good step to reduce that 40-plus percent regulation cost that's passed on to the consumer, so very much in favor and happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for your thoroughness and your attempts at coming up with something good that'll fit. I just wanted to ask you about the ADA part. How does this affect the blue striping along the curbs and making it possible for the handicap to be able to have close access to where they're going?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell. We did work with the executive director of the city's Office of Accessibility, and actually, Time Curtis is here today to answer any questions. This regulation would not affect any curb striping. It would, consistent with Title 24, if parking is required, it must meet the ADA requirements. But if you have any additional questions, Ms. Curtis is here to answer your questions.
Time Curtis with the Office of ADA Compliance and Accessibility.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you about this question. Say, a new multifamily building is built. How would we decide how many ADA spaces would be needed for parking?
Sure. If parking is required, then you would have to provide the same amount of ADA spots that you would currently, under current parking regulations. But if there's no regular parking spots required, then there wouldn't be any ADA as well.
So, you're saying that if no regular parking spots are required, which under this rule there wouldn't be, there will be no ADA parking spots?
Correct. That would be a choice for somebody who lives in one of these apartments or condos. If they chose to live there, it would be because of the cost difference of not having that parking, because there's individuals who have disabilities that don't have cars and do use public transit.
And there are many people who've become injured, have to use ADA parking for a short time, and then go back to being well again. Ms. Granowitz was injured, run over recently. I see she's much better today, thank God, but I'm sure for a while, she had to use ADA parking. So, I think not having something in this act to make sure that we have parking for those with disabilities, I think it's very important. Perhaps staff could consider adding that to this if it passes, or somehow, we could make another motion?
Let me clarify. So, while we have a zero parking minimum, if parking is provided, so again, zero parking just lowers the requirement down to zero. So, anything provided above one triggers the need to provide ADA-accessible parking spaces consistent with the state requirements and ADA. If it is a zero parking project, meaning that they are in very close proximity to transit, and the market yields a need for or an interest in having no parking provided on-site, then those types of units would be built in a way that would probably target the population of those needing accommodations that do not have cars and cannot drive. So, they would be seeking out units that are at a lower cost without a parking space.
So, if they cannot drive, either physically or for other reasons, but they have a disability that requires people to come and take care of them and help them, where are those people going to park?
So, those can arrive and in our loading zones that are on the streets or on properties, be able to use those spaces to load and unload persons with disabilities.
What if they have to go in and spend the day helping the person with their activities of daily living, and they have nowhere to park? So, I guess they'd only be able to use people who could take the public transit that's within a half a mile of their building?
The parking may not be on-site, but it might be in close proximity.
Okay. I disagree with this removal of parking requirement as being a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea, yet. As Chair of the Environment Committee, I'm trying to help our city reduce greenhouse gases produced by too many gasoline-powered vehicles. This effort must involve building a mass transit system that is effective and efficient for our citizens, but the removal of parking requirements is an idea whose time has not yet come. Not having parking will neither provide mass transit, nor will it directly provide more housing. The removal of parking requirements should be one of the last steps in moving our city away from car-centric transit, instead of one of the first. Our communities first require the investment in infrastructure that will help this transition. Our regional transit agencies are only beginning to build the projects that will make not having a car a viable option. Per Circulate San Diego, 95% of San Diegans have cars. Putting in zero parking while adding density without the infrastructure of mass transit already present will lead to decreased quality of life and frustration for our citizens. Why are we putting forth legislation that's good for developers first, when there are so many other ways that we can ease their ability to build housing? Why has this come before changing the permitting and inspection processes? Why is the development impact fee structure remaining unchanged, and affordable housing incentive bonuses are just beginning to be used? Where are the new regulations that make this new urbanization equitable for all the people who need places to live? When crafting laws to help build more housing, where are the laws that ensure opportunity for all rungs of the housing ladder? I believe our mass transit future, being laid out by our new leaders of MTS, our council president, and the new executive director of Sandag, will make this type of policy possible, but not right now. Once it is convenient and saves money and time for people to use mass transit, they will. But in the meantime, until rapid transit bus lines and light rail lines are present between our homes, our businesses, and our jobs, I cannot support this measure.
Thank you. Before I call on Councilmember Montgomery, city attorney has, she wants to clarify the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Moreno, I just wanted to clarify that in your motion, you intended to include staff's recommendations that were listed in their PowerPoint today, and the correction to include the subsection C, the citation clarification? Did you intend to include those recommendations by staff?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And we'll put the four sections with the citation correction up on the screen, or I'm sorry, five sections.
Councilmember Montgomery.
So, this should not be as hard for me as it is. I really feel like people who gravitate toward my district have not been considered as much in this proposal, and I'll give you some reasons why, but I first want to follow up with the issue of providing parking for folks with disabled permits. I really would like to hear from the city attorney on that, with regard to whether we're in compliance with federal law, because I know that we can get into a lot of trouble, and it could cost us fines if we're not.
So, my understanding is that the ordinance before you today was modeled after ordinances in other cities that were drafted in a similar fashion, and that staff considered the ADA issues. If you would like a more comprehensive opinion by our office, we can do that. I can't do it sitting here today, but we could certainly do it in short order if that's a concern for the council?
Well, it's a concern for at least two of us. So, I think that I would, I do want to request that, even if this is passed today, that if we need to go back and amend anything, just to make sure that we are compliant with federal law and then state law, if we're looking at Seattle and Portland that are not in California, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here, and just, we do have a goal of being equitable here, and it just seems unfair that if we take away the parking requirements and we don't have any parking. Is there, do you have any additional, anything else on that? No? Okay. Okay.
Well, I was going to say, we also looked at San Francisco, Santa Monica, and Sacramento, and ensured that our ordinance was written consistently with how they approached the issue of accessibility, and also their policies are similar to ours, where requests can be made for on-street blue curb to provide for those types of parking spots where they may not already exist at the ratio or levels that are needed or required under state and federal law.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll look forward to that analysis, too.
Certainly.
Thank you. So, here's why this is tough for people in District 4. There's a property that's 100% affordable housing that was developed recently on Willie James Jones Road. There's O.G. Courtyards. There's Trolley Residential. All of these are 100% affordable, and based on what we have before us, none of these would qualify to have the amenities that are listed here, so they wouldn't be a part of that point system. You know, when I'm in meetings and I tell folks that I don't have a restaurant to invite my colleagues to in my community, that is a problem, and when we don't consider that with these types of ordinances, I have, I take issue with that, because this could be a way where we could receive more of those amenities that we don't have. We are taking on our lion's share of affordable housing, and making those requirements, and taking on that for the city of San Diego, but we're still, there's an exemption in this ordinance that I have a major problem with. So, with, when you spoke about in your presentation, NOFA funds and other pots that are being used to provide amenities for affordable housing, do we have any benchmarks that were included, or that you thought about or looked at, as to how those funds are actually distributed?
No, we did not benchmark that information, but that was a consideration, so to ensure we don't prioritize one type of housing over the affordable housing.
Okay. I mean, I would like to see that, but I also wouldn't be able to support the motion unless there's an amendment made that would take away that exemption of at least 20% affordable housing that's in Section 142.0528. The portion that reads at the very bottom of page five of 26 that reads, or that includes at least 20% onsite housing that is affordable to persons with a household income equal to or less than 50% of the area median income, as determined in accordance with California Health and Safety Code, Section 593, and is subject to an affordability restriction for a minimum of 55 years. I mean, unless we can strike that, I won't be able to support this, so I would like to ask the maker of the motion if you would allow that to be a part of your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I don't know about if, have to do another second, but that's just really something that is very important. If we already have these pockets of money that provide for affordable housing developers to provide these amenities, then that's great, but I don't think we should give them it out in this ordinance. This is, this is change. You know, we're going to have opposite sides, and that happens. San Diego is changing. I have staff members that, you know, probably would appreciate this, and being able to live here and to afford to live here, young staff members, but I also don't, you know, I would like to see us included across the board. I think it's a more equitable approach. So, thank you, Councilmember Moreno, and with that, I'll be able to support it.
And just to make sure the second, the second of the motion...
Secondary? That's good enough.
Secondary of the motion accepts...
Yeah, I just have one quick question along that. I'm pretty sure I'm okay with that. Do we know what the cost of adding those amenities to affordable housing would drive, would cost per unit, or, you know, drive up the cost of developing those affordable units?
Councilmember Mike Hansen, planning director. So, the cost would depend on the amenity, and we don't have the costs, but we do believe that the market is already calling for many of these. What we've heard from many developers is that their residents desire them, they view them as an amenity, that it's something that helps make the development more marketable, and we would support the amended motion, as suggested by Councilmember Montgomery, to make the change to have them apply to affordable developments.
Okay. I'm going to be okay with, as a secondary, I just want to make sure that by trying to put a lot of these in, we're just not driving up the cost per unit, therefore, driving down the number of units we can build, so, but supportive as it's stated and as you explained. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you, Councilmember Montgomery, for your deep thought into this. I want to study this a little bit more. I wanted to thank staff, of course, for bringing this forward. I had a lot to stay and query on and committing, so I appreciate the further work you did, particularly on the downtown parking maximum side and some additional regulations here that are incorporated in the motion today. You know, I'd say that I understand for many, this is pretty, I'll use the word radical, and it kind of cuts against the grain of how people feel around the tensions around parking and parking supply, but the only regret that I have is that maybe we weren't a little bit bold and a little bit more forward-thinking about this ahead of time. We're not the first city, not even close to the first major city, to be able to explore an opportunity like this for the sole purpose of working on development costs associated with housing. And yes, we need to do more on transit, and we need all this to tie to here together, but that really is what is bringing this item here today, is to see how the city can emulate what others' cities have been doing to be able to drive down the costs. And so, I look not just in the two-peer cities that were studied pretty extensively, but there were several that were a part of this report as well, too, cities like Sacramento and Austin and Minneapolis, that have been able to do, that have been able to have zero minimums as well, not also cities associated with the best transit systems, but hopefully, they'll get there, too. And I have to wonder, is there anything different about San Diegans than citizens of those cities? If they were able to actually start to reduce the numbers of vehicles per household, if they were able to actually show some mode shift over time, and if they were able to make it all work, how isn't this an opportunity that would be ripe and be able to work well for the city of San Diego? And that's where I'm getting to a level of comfort. I'm also comfortable because, again, I think the market will decide. Not every project going forward is going to have zero parking. It'll just have a reduced number that actually will meet the clients that, or the, either the renters or the prospective owners that they wish to, they wish to serve. If they don't, then that project is going to fail, and I don't think that they're in the business of failing. We also actually have two projects in downtown that, six members of this council, we approved last year, that have close to zero parking on-site. These are pilot projects, one in Little Italy, one in the East Village, but when those developers are trying to get to a rental point of $1,200 to $1,500 per unit, you can't find that downtown anymore with the existing kinds of parking standards that are tied to the cost of development. So, I do think it's the right way to go for the... So I do think it's the right way to go for the economic reasons. I'm certainly thankful that unbundled parking is a part of this as well, that we can talk a little bit more about that opportunity. So if you want parking, it allows, under our law now, the ability to separate that out, so people can actually see what the cost of parking is. It's an additional choice there. The transportation amenities, I think, again, tying this together for certain requirements for these projects, I think, is gonna help to actually incentivize people to also move away while the market-based conditions for lower parking on those projects will also be in place as well. The only two questions I have is, one regarding the Coastal Commission, maybe in particular with San Francisco and Santa Monica, I'm sure they were subject to review as well. Did this pose any issue for the Coastal Commission review?
None that we're aware of. We have been meeting with our local Coastal Commission staff and getting them comfortable as well with the proposed regulations and providing the same data that we've provided to you, as well as information about the transportation amenities and how that can improve those neighborhood conditions in the beach area.
And can I just get on the record, too, from the city attorney for SEQA, you've considered this exempt, categorically exempt. Are we absolutely comfortable? I'm sure there will be a challenge with this, but I want to make sure on the record that we feel that this is SEQA exempt.
Deputy City Attorney Jeremy Jung. Yes, the exemption was based primarily on the SB 740...
743.
743, and the resulting statute that exempted a studying parking impacts from SEQA impacts.
Thank you. And lastly, if I can just get a commitment to the mayor, from the mayor's staff, parking districts is something that I hear often, and I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more going forward, and our current policies of how we form parking districts around the city, maybe that is deserved for an information item or some kind of a review, and I'd really enjoy working with you on that going forward. I think it's timely, especially in light of this action today.
Yes, would be happy to do that.
Great.
Councilmember, before we move off of the SEQA, I would like to just reiterate that under 21099D1, and that was implemented into the statute under SB 743, says that parking impacts of a residential mixed-use or employment center on an infill site within a TPA shall not be considered an impact under SEQA. So again, that further substantiates the determinations we made in our environmental memo.
Great, well, thank you. Again, I appreciate all your work on this. I think it will actually help, just as it's helped citizens of other cities, and so I'm looking forward to seeing how this progresses.
Councilmember Kersey.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, everybody, for coming down today, for the work on this and for all your input. It's been very valuable and I really appreciate it. There is a lot to liken this proposal and some concerns I have as well, so I'll start with the positives. I think the market-based approach to this makes a lot of sense. I think that any time that you can let the individual project and the folks who are constructing it and are planning it, and ultimately the people who live there, decide what makes the most sense for that particular project, that is, generally speaking, the better way to go. I think unbundled parking makes a lot of sense as well. When I lived in downtown Chicago after I graduated from college, the apartment building I lived in was a mid-rise, and they had parking that you could elect to add to your lease for a fairly exorbitant rate, and so I elected not to, and did a lot of walking and taking of the bus, and that made sense because those were both good options for me. So I think that that approach makes good sense, too. With some of the concerns that folks have brought up, I would add to the chorus on the concerns about the ADA issue, and I appreciate Mr. Roderick's being here. That is something that I have very big concerns about, and I would like to see, and I would actually ask that we add to the motion respectfully, if the city attorney, direction of the city attorney, to prepare an analysis and making sure that this is in compliance with the ADA law federally.
Sure, you don't have to include it in your motion, you can just request it, we will, we will prepare the opinion.
Okay, very good, appreciate that. I definitely want to make sure that not only are we in compliance, because that's obviously important, but it's as or more important that we're actually doing right by the folks who need this option available. And so I don't know exactly what the best ways to handle that. Obviously, we'll find out if we're legally in compliance, but I want to make sure that we're keeping close watch on this. So again, to me, this is a TBD, because we're gonna have to see how this plays out a little bit, but we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing here, and so I'm gonna be keeping a close, a close watch on that. On the TPA calculation, how we define it is set by state law, right, in SB 743? How we actually draw the circle and calculate the half-mile, is that also in SB 743, or is that something that we're left to interpret?
Yes, that is derived from SB 743.
And so it says in there as the crow flies?
It says a half-mile radius.
A half-mile radius, okay. One of the public speakers brought this up, and the Planning Board in Rancho Bernardo brought this up as well. The trouble I have with this is that we're not building housing for crows, we're building it for people, and people need to walk. And so you look at the BRT stop that we have in Rancho Bernardo, it's just to the west of I-15, and there are some projects, or some parcels, rather, on the east side of the freeway that are within a half-a-mile radius. The problem is, they're nowhere near half-a-mile of actually being able to walk or even take a scooter, if scooters were actually available, which of course they're not. There's no way to get there in walking, in probably a 45-minute time period, right? And so realistically, it may meet the technical definition of a TPA, but there's no way it really is, right? Because no one's actually gonna do that. And so if you're gonna take advantage of that BRT stop, most likely, you're gonna have to drive there. Whether it's your own car, whether it's someone else's, you're realistically not gonna walk. So I'm not sure what the best way is to address it if it's the state law that really is telling us how to do that. Perhaps we should add it to our legislative platform to get that better defined, but my concern is as much for this particular ordinance as it is for future things that we're gonna be discussing related to the mayor's housing initiatives, as well as things like SB 50 at the state level. If we're really drawing a circle, which seems like a very rudimentary way to do it, and we're not taking into account things like topography, natural barriers, man-made barriers like freeways, then we're not really, in my opinion, doing what we should be to actually encourage people to get out of their cars, right? If we say it's a TPA, but people are still driving there because it's not really a TPA, and people can't actually walk there in less than an hour, then I don't really think we've solved anything. So that is something that it sounds like we may have to pursue at a state level, but that is something that I think we need to pursue as we embark on these things. So that is, I think, as much as I need to say on this, the ADA issues are big, they're serious, we need to work on it. And I would say, lastly, that when it comes to this, we're removing the minimums and the requirements, but because it's a market-based approach, I think that particularly in the parcels in my district to which this will apply, the developers are still going to have to take a market-based approach, right? They're not just gonna be able to eliminate all the parking and then say, you know, here you go, community, hope you can deal with it. At the end of the day, people are still operating in a competitive environment, and they still have to go out and get people to sign the lease or the purchase agreement to buy. And if there's not adequate infrastructure, in this case, parking, people won't do that. And in that scenario, I think the market will still take over, and the developer will be able to have more flexibility, but they're still gonna have to have some amount of parking to accommodate that. So I want to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say. I'm leaning in favor of supporting it, but I would like to hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Protembri.
Great. First of all, I'd like to thank staff, Ms. Muto and Mr. Hanson, for all the research and work you've done to bring us this proposal today. I'm very excited for 2029. I believe it will definitely be a different world, and I hope to be in this world in 2029. I think the issue is what life's gonna be like between now and 2029, and some of my colleagues brought up some of the issues. I think one, a few important things that have been mentioned. One is, the market will be able to determine what's appropriate for each project in each community. Second, this only impacts new projects, so even if we approved something tomorrow, it likely wouldn't open for two to three years. So it's not like it's gonna happen tomorrow, it's two to three years out. And that gives the city more time to develop better transit options. I appreciate that several of my colleagues brought up the issue, the issues for the disabled community, and from what you've said, Ms. Muto, if a project even builds one parking space, it triggers ADA?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And I'm looking forward to the opinion from the city attorney on this issue, because I think going forward, we are likely to have more people with disabilities in our city, and we'll need to make sure that they're all treated equitably. I also appreciate the amendment by Councilmember Montgomery to apply this to affordable housing, and listen carefully to Councilmember Kersey talking about, you know, just because it's within half-a-mile doesn't mean it's accessible within half-a-mile. And I actually think of an area in District 2 where apparently there now will be a bridge across Interstate 5, so that people, you know, on both sides of Interstate 5 can easily access public transit near the Balboa Light Rail System. I mean, because right now, if there is no bridge, again, you would have to go make a big detour to get to it. So I will support the motion today.
Thank you. Councilmember Kate.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, members of the public who came out here to speak, and a lot of thanks to the mayor's office and staff for doing the hard work of preparing this and presenting this, going out to the community, and having it come before us today. And the issue of housing affordability in our entire region is something that really hits close to home for me and my family. I had a sister who just left, graduated from college, couldn't afford to live in San Diego, ended up moving to Bangor, Maine, where the cost of living is considerably less, to be able to have a job, pay for housing, all of that. I have a grandmother who spent the last two years trying to find a place to live and be on her own in San Diego, which has a huge impact, because my family is doing what we can to provide housing and a roof over our head, that's an issue. And so it's something that we consistently hear, especially the folks who are graduating from college, trying to find work, trying to find a place to live, to work in that location, and trying to find a place that is somewhat affordable. And we all know that we are nowhere near where we need to be when it comes to creating a lot of housing to keep up. And so anything that we can do to look at reducing the cost of housing is something that we should be considering as a body. I come from a different place than maybe some others on this dais in terms of why they're supporting it. For me, I believe in the market, and I believe in giving options to people, whether that be the supplier or the individual who's demanding that supply. And I don't think that this is gonna be something that happens tomorrow, in which we're having projects built with no parking, but I would appreciate, as someone who shops and looks at finances and the cost, to have that broken out for me and give me an option of whether I can buy a unit with parking or without parking. Again, let that market decide. On the issue of ADA, and I really appreciate my colleagues' comments on that, that's something that is extremely important. I look forward to the analysis done by the city attorney's office. I may go a step further and request the Audit Committee Chair, if he can bring this up potentially in the audit work plan for next year. We just completed an audit on red curbs and how to streamline that process. I would ask the same thing when it comes to handicap parking as well, too, and make sure that we are as streamlined as possible and looking at that and making sure that we are efficient. And if there are any holes, let the auditor make any recommendations for improvement. So I don't need to put it in the motion, but hopefully the Audit Committee Chair can look at that.
Would be happy to discuss that with the auditor.
Perfect, thank you very much. Again, looking at the areas that are with my council district, some areas will not be impacted, some will be. If you look at Kearney Mesa, for example, this is something that we are doing our best to make sure that the future residents of Kearney Mesa can live, work, and play all in that neighborhood. We're having hundreds of thousands of jobs in that area, we're adding tens of thousands of units in that area, and so I think this is something that would be a good testing ground for this moving forward. But again, going back to the point of having to reduce the cost of housing, it's personal for me, and I will be looking at options to reduce the cost of housing as much as possible. This is just that first step. So thank you very much, Council President, and thank you, staff, for your work on this.
Thank you, and I want to start by thanking the audience for being here, being respectful. I really appreciate everybody's opinions, and I also want to thank staff for your, for the work that you've done to get us here. I have a few, a few questions. I'm gonna start with, overall, I do support the intention of this proposal today for two reasons. One is, I've been a big advocate on ensuring that we're moving forward our housing policies that will lead to more housing. But I've said it before, and I will say it today, I don't believe in just creating policy and hoping a good outcome. We do have a housing affordability, a housing, lack of affordable housing, we have an issue, and policy should be crafted in such a way. In today's proposal, we're talking about reducing parking, which I'm a supporter of the idea, but we're hoping that the type of housing that will get developed will be the one that we need, and I don't think that's going to be the case, but I'm gonna be, I'm gonna see. I'm just, I don't, do not believe in the trickle-down idea, it just has not worked, and we have evidence of that. So my support on this is not because I believe that just by reducing the cost of parking, that magically developers are going to be renting or creating housing that will get to the need, so, but I'm hoping, and I'm challenging the developers that are here to do the right thing for San Diegans. So having said that, related to housing, definitely need to do more. Now, related to the Climate Action Plan, I also do believe that this is linked to that, and hopeful, I'm hoping that by doing this as well, that it will help us achieve our mode share related to reducing our VMT. So I'm looking forward in seeing how we capture that and what we do, but I also, once again, I just think that we could have done this a bit stronger, so I'm hoping that as we move forward, we ensure that we're capturing the data and we're getting to the goals that we have set. I think we need to do more aside from parking, we need to create an infrastructure that supports that, and that means we need to create the infrastructure for biking. And as the Chair of MTS, I'm very much mindful that we need a better transportation system for our region and working really hard on making that happen. So having said all of that, my questions are, related to the Appendix Q, and I appreciate the amendments that were proposed today, definitely think that if we are going to be reducing vehicles' miles of travel, we need to create policies that promote that, and active transportation and transit are those policies that you should be moving forward, so I'm happy that we're emphasizing that. I do want to ask the maker of the motion if we're open on including, a lot of our community plans make reference to the Community Plan Mobility, the Element Active Transportation and Transit projects, these are elements that are embedded in our community plans. Why not list them in the Appendix Q? So I would like to request that we actually list that, and that's based on what the community has already identified of what those projects should be. So is that something that we can make reference to?
I'm sorry, can you repeat exactly what you would like to add?
I would like to list, one of the items that folks can look at are basically pulling the Community Plan Mobility Element Active Transportation, and this is what they're called, to make reference to that. And that means that as community plans are getting updated, we're being more crafty in developing these mobility plans that call out projects that have been identified by our community. Right now, we're not making reference to that, we're just making reference to another list. So I just think, in honor of the work that the community has identified, we should encourage developers to invest in that. So I just think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't see an issue with that, absolutely.
Okay. Yes.
Ask the city attorney to opine if we're not getting too far afield here with all the motions we're adding?
Yes, I was just gonna ask if DCA Jeremy Jung would like to comment on whether he has any legal concerns with that particular addition to the motion, or if we need a minute to confer on it?
With the most recent suggestion, not necessarily a legal issue, but the Appendix Q, as I understand it, sets forth specific amenities with the points assigned to them. So just adding the Community Plan Mobility requirement, I don't know if it would make sense within the framework. I think first, there would have to be assignment of... I think first, there would have to be assignment of points and then adding, so I think just, it might not be easy just to add it at this moment.
Could staff kind of opine on that, too, please?
Yes, Councilmember, I would recommend referencing the Community Plan Mobility Elements under the first amenity, transportation amenity, calling it out as transit and active transportation infrastructure as outlined in our Community Plan Mobility Elements. I would suggest referencing it so that we don't need to copy all of our 52 Community Plan Mobility Elements into this appendix, but support, of course, the intention.
I would be okay with that.
Then, then the secondary is fine, too.
Okay.
No, yeah, I'm definitely okay with that.
Okay, great, thank you. I just, I just think that it's, it's important as we continue to lay out plans and more plans, I just think we need to be a bit more consistent. And then, secondly, this is not part of today, but I do, I would like to request as a follow-up, and this is not part of the motion, but I do see that there is a benefit for, for future applicants on developments. There's a financial benefit. I mean, we talked about $95,000 for a cost of a parking space, and I get that that's an impact to the development, but removing that cost, that means $95,000 that are being saved. I would want us to be a little bit more crafty and, and create a transit program fee that would capture a percentage of that, I'm not asking for 100%, but capture a percentage of that that would be put into a fund that supports either infrastructure projects or support transit passes for riders. So I would like to see if the IBA is willing to create a study, working with the Planning Department, to bring it back to the Committee of Land Use to really look at the possibility of creating this, this, this fee.
Oh, yes, we can certainly look at that, and we'll work closely with the Planning Department, of course.
Okay, I appreciate that, and would that be okay with the Chair of Land Use?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you so much.
I have one more comment before the, the motion is called, the vote is called. For, I believe, DCA Jeremy Jung wanted to ask just a brief clarifying question on Councilmember Montgomery's addition, sorry to catch you off-guard. Can you clarify, can you ask her who your clarifying question?
Yes, of course. So, Councilmember Montgomery, you wanted to also require affordable housing to provide transportation amenities, correct?
Correct, the way that they're lined out in the ordinance, which is on the point system, as an incentive to not do the parking, right?
The reason I'm asking is because the way that the amendment to the motion is, is that that change would also, would not subject them to the requirement to provide unbundled parking, is that also your intention?
Would not subject them to the requirement to...
Provide unbundled parking.
Right, I'm just, that's a good question. This is what it looks like, people. What I have on there is okay, I think, so, because that is what, the unbundled portion is not listed along with...
It's towards the end of that sentence.
Okay.
So the sentence, the sentence starts on page six.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. So why don't we keep it clean across the board and include unbundled parking as well? So as a part of the amendment, put the transportation amenities with the unbundled parking.
That they would also have to provide unbundled parking.
Correct.
Okay, then, then the changes.
Okay. Okay.
Do, do we need a minute to put that up on the screen, or does it currently reflect the councilmember's intent?
We can, we can take a minute break to be able to make this happen.
Yeah, okay, short recess.